It is, it is just after seven. So let's call the meeting to order. Are you all ready?
Room for improvement.
Okay. Okay, folks, we're in, we called the meeting to order. Welcome to the Friday Community Television. Thank you for being here. Yeah, that's probably a good idea. We'll go around and introduce ourselves this time, since we don't have name tags anymore. Do our thing.
Well, I don't know where those one are.
They're still in the drawers there.
They probably are still in the drawers there. So Frank, you can start, since you're on that end.
Sure, Frank Rucker, the Chief Financial Officer, Wyndham Central.
Januarado, Adam Nufen.
Patricia Dixon, Jamaica.
Bruce Parliament, Jamaica.
Joe Winrick from Townsend.
Emily Long, Nufen, of Chair.
Stephen John, the Superintendent of Schools.
Baman Madavi, Nufen.
Durin Dorson, Principal, Leland and Gray.
Jeremy Kellaway, Nufen.
Okay, thanks everyone for being here. additions or corrections to the agenda? Have they had how many?
We will have an executive session for personnel as listed.
Right, that's already on the agenda. Does everybody have their agenda, or you're at least looking on it on your?
Need a copy?
Anybody need copies?
Not me.
Looks like they're all set.
Everybody's all set, okay.
Jeremy's gonna...
Yep.
Journey East is not presenting today, it will need to be at the June meeting.
Okay, so under new business, the Journey East program, reports and prospects, that's not gonna happen tonight? Is that right?
Right.
So, so we'll put on a whole thing of this for the June.
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay, so that's a change to the agenda. So we're gonna make that in June. Anything else? If not, we move on to members of the public. And we have no members of the public beyond Friday Community Television. I will open it up if you have anything you want to say. Thank you. You got what you need to. Okay, correspondence. I had the newsletter, which is in here if somebody wants it, in the box, but that was the only thing. Does anybody have any correspondence? Actually, here's the newsletter. I'll pass it around for everybody, I hope everybody's getting this. I had to put it in my handbag side. Okay. No other correspondence? If not?
I'm gonna just pass that on.
Mandatory reports, we're moving right along. What time, principal, that?
What was sent out earlier was a summary of all of the data that we will be looking at in a more formalized way, which you've been seeing is, is when it has become available, but it hasn't been structured in terms of, well, what do we expect to see during the year? And everything, you, I would expect you receive something like this in the mail? Okay, or email?
My printer wants to follow. I like that.
Well, we also shared this at a faculty meeting a week ago, so there's a whole bunch more copies if you'd like.
Great, that's great. And, and just before you go on, we had some, I had some struggle opening the report. Did the rest of you? I did get it open, but I was afraid some of the board didn't, would, might not be able to.
With no file extension? No files.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was a word document.
Right, so I managed to get it open, but some might not have. So if anybody needs to see the copy of the written report, they can make copies? It wasn't, it wasn't there for people to view either, was it?
No.
Did they wanna? Does anybody wanna see it?
No.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So I'm almost embarrassed that it's almost my second year here as principal, and I haven't handed you what you can expect for data collection every year. And so I felt that it was important for my leadership team to always be prepared and to be able to deliver on the areas that I need to share with you for the immediate school board goals, as well as for the various grants, grant reports that we have to produce for 21st Century, for the Title I grant, as well as things that we need to be looking at on a regular basis, like behavior referral data, kneecap scores, which is also part of the immediate goals. I mean, you see this, at this point, seventeen different items. Some of them look at the same data, but they're, all the reports are different from one another. And I try to find a timeframe in which it was, what should I say? The most appropriate timeframe in which to share the data. Now, I had said in the report that I didn't want to overload you with data by doing it all, like, say, in July, which doesn't work for our schedule either, but then when I look at this, three quarters of it is in June. So that is the data collection time, that the report's in July anyway. But that makes sense, because that's the end of the year, when we have all the data on attendance completed, when the Title I report is done, et cetera. So, and it, and you'll see, there's a couple of columns about, the two-thirds of the way over to the right, for the, where it says the Leland and Gray report card, an annual report. So what we're trying to develop in our supervisory union is a report card for every school that has some resemblance to the others, that would be included in the annual report, and just sort of a two-pager, very visual information sheet about the progress our school is making. It's gonna be different from the elementary schools, because we report on some things that are different from, that you have K through six. So that's one column, and then next is about our action plan. Again, our action plan is the Title I action plan, doesn't refer to the board goals. But there's so much overload of it, I don't think it will, it's almost unnoticed. It's just so similar. Our board goals are more specific. Questions, thoughts? I know there's, there's a lot in here, but I needed it, I needed to all come out something like this to say, to keep us on track. And are we really looking at everything we need to? For me, something that's glaringly omitted is common assessments in specific course areas. So the common assessment, in, common assessments in their writing genres, because we have common rubrics that all the teachers use, but we should be able to say that in 10th grade, that students have achieved this on that rubric for persuasive writing, and then in 12th grade, here was their progress. We are required to have a little bit of assessment system, and it's essentially kneecaps and the MAPS testing in the middle school right now. But common assessments that are based on the courses and the course content instructed is the next step for us in terms of data collection. But that's a one, two, three years till we've really got that down. Just the beginning stages right now.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll open it up for questions, but I just wanted to quick say, this is wonderful to have this in front of us, you know? And I would expect that I won't be the only one who's gonna be bringing this. Might get a little dog here, bringing it into meetings, but it's really wonderful to be able to sit down and look at this. There is a lot of stuff in here, a lot of data in here. I thank you so much for doing this. Questions for Durin, or comments, of course?
So those of you who attend, I'll interrupt just to give you a perspective. Those of you who attended the full WCSC board meeting in May 23rd, what the superintendent's report will be, will be primarily the school reports, report cards from each school. So for the first time, you as board members will be able to see what the progress reports are, the status of student progress in each school. We will not break that down in our small schools by grade level, that gets a little too close to identifying students. So we will have summary data, Matt's working on the summary data across grade level, across the SU. But we will be able to see for each school, perhaps with the exception of Wyndham, reports on the, on the, you know, the student progress. And I'm trying, we're struggling, I mean, we've had an adventure as principals, looking at what we need and what would be appropriate for our particular schools, and then the challenges for our administrative team is to, you know, agree as to what the axis and, you know, the X and the Y will be, and what the scale will be, so that they look, you know, so they're comparable. And I think that this may not, I mean, this should not satisfy the board completely, but it should be the big step towards recognizing how we can hold our administration accountable, Putin used truly, for the student progress within each school and, and among the schools across the SU. So it should provoke some discussion, and I look forward to that, to seeing as many of you there as can make it.
Yeah, I'll echo that too, because it doesn't need to be the three voting reps only.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it's an inclusive meeting.
It's really important for, especially for this meeting, because it's the annual meeting. That's when we get the reporting back, so if you can make it, it's in Dover.
And it'll also provide the information for your summer retreat, in terms of your revising or reviewing the strategic plan, the goal strategic plan. Which may, you may be in a position for the first time to actually do something significant about revising those goals.
So you have a big effort of data collection over the next two, three months. And we can expect to see some of this data compiled by August, September? That'll give us a lot to ponder over, yeah.
Well, for the due date of, of the report, I would imagine that whenever the board meeting is in the second week of July is when you would see where it also says 7, 1, 12. That, and it's, you might say, no, we don't want to see it all at the July meeting, can you save it for August?
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, you, it's, right, right, that's, but it, but we, right, right. So I think that would be actually helpful in terms of, sorry, adding another column, when the board would like to see that data.
Yeah, that might be.
Yeah.
And just as a reminder, we often miss either July or August, we skip that, one of the summer meetings, which is kind of, we really should be thinking about that ahead of time when it comes to this. When do we want to see this, and are we going to skip our summer meeting like we have in the past? We haven't done it every year, but we, last year we didn't do August, I don't think.
Um, perhaps, sometimes it's July.
It was one we didn't do last year.
Also, you and I, when we report about the red, Joe, we may want to call attention to the possibility, please, Joe, of the, of a July reason to meet. But we'll wait till we get to that part of the agenda.
Right, so we should keep that in mind as we're moving forward, especially based on promising. It is a lot, and there's, you know, we have to do this, we have to make sure that we're meeting and taking this in. This is critical.
Well, you might also say, as a, as a board, you don't want all these reports. You don't want the Title I report.
Yeah.
You might not want the Educational Support System report. I mean, this is data that we need, like I just discovered that we now have eighty-three students with EST plans. That's almost three times as many as we did a year ago. Educational support team, so it's a regular education, a regular education plan for a student who needs help to be successful. So it could be anything from, the student comes in after school for help two days a week, to parents have to call the, the teachers have to call the parents as soon as a student's missing an assignment. It's a lot.
So maybe what we should do is go home and look this over, now that it's in bigger writing. Look it over, and come back at the next meeting and give a better sense of what we may feel we want to look at, and what we might not in the timeline for, for reviewing that.
Adrian, I was just curious, like, for example, the school climate survey, even though it sounds interesting to me, the data collection time is June, is that a survey you're still gonna put together? Is it CAM survey that we've done before?
It's an existing survey, we did it last year for the first time, and I, we used it at Harwood, and I tweaked it a little bit, working with Rich Grepp, who's a, you know, this is field.
I remember Rich.
So it'll, we'll have two years then of this data. Which makes the report probably twice as long, because you're comparing to the previous year.
Right, right.
So it's an online survey, it's very easy to compute.
And the youth risk behavior survey, we review that pretty much every time it comes out, so, you know, you can look back on that one.
Is there any specific ones that are real different than what we've done in the past that you highlight to us?
I don't know if you've looked at SAT and AP scores? I don't, and, I mean, we started looking at behavior referral data together. I don't know if that was happening that way before. I, I'm certain that I shared parts of the, the school climate survey. Attendance is, is probably not something I would report on. I mean, it says recipients, it says school board as, as a possible recipient, or as, it says, it just says, you know, that it would be. It's very hard to make sense of the attendance data, unfortunately, because the differences between excused absences, unexcused absences, and it's, it's much more complex. So, and that doesn't always yield useful data.
And it overlaps into other areas also, I mean, sometimes when you have a, a report on discipline, attendance might, you know, be a part of that.
Only truancy.
Would we look at our goals that we set, and kind of look at these reports, and pick our primary goals, and figure out which reports might give us information about how we're progressing? Is that, it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Possibly the way to attack it, because otherwise, like, oh, it's all great information, but...
And another reason to think about the timeline, too. We set those goals in September last year. Need to make sure we're reviewing them. I know. Yeah, time flies.
Yeah.
Okay, so, anything else you want to share, Durin?
No, I think, yeah, I'm trying to say, uh, yeah, thank you.
So we'll, we'll make sure we have this again on the agenda for next month, just briefly, so everybody can share after they've had time to really look into it. We'll, we'll put a little time on the agenda to share what we think for the timeline, for the reporting out. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask a very question?
Yeah.
How's the master schedule coming off next?
It's done.
It's done?
Yeah. We presented it to the faculty yesterday. It's top secret, because it was the opportunity for the faculty to look at their class lists, as well as the actual bell schedule of the day, of which blocks of the day or periods of the day that they're teaching. So they have until Friday to give us, that is the scheduling committee feedback, and work on it a bit more. But I can look on my computer and tell you when the deadline, the, the date is, that it's gonna be like the, I think it's the Friday before Memorial Day, that students will receive their schedules for next year.
That's wonderful.
Big load off your shoulders.
That's the earliest stuff to get set up.
No, that's time for everybody to complain.
Right, right.
It gets plenty of time.
Well, it does, but it's, you know, our, our students, and many years ago, have received them during the summer.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just before school opened, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
We really appreciate that this is, I think that's so much farther ahead. It's great, even if there are complaints, go ahead.
If I could add, following up on Patty's suggestion. I think in doing so, the board is beginning to get close to developing ends policies. You know, we talk about policy governance, we talked before about your, your responsibility to provide the means policies, which are the finance. And then on the other end, after the administration and the school is functioning somewhat, the other end is the accountability, is the ends policies. And when you link the indicators to the goals that you set in, in your Terms of Reaction Plan in the fall, then, you know, then you have a complete cycle, I mean, for the first time, actually, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
So certainly, I just want to make sure you realize how, how much joy that brings to me in terms of where we're trying to go, in terms of, you know, highly functioning, effective school board, and administration, and therefore staff, so.
And, and policy governance, we've talked about it here at this board for a long time. Some of you have been here longer than others, but we've been talking about it for a long time, and we know that for us to move into policy governance, which we've talked about doing on our own, away from all the other boards in Wyndham Central, would be a hardship, especially on the superintendent. And the thought was that maybe we could move into that, move that, in that direction at an SU level. It, it hasn't been happening at an SU level, but I do know there's another board who's thinking very seriously about doing it as well, that's New Brook. The New Brook Board is considering going that direction, too. So I think as we operate more in that format, and see the value, I think it'll be easier for us to share that, it's a training process that everybody has to go through to get into policy government study, it's true, it's...
Yeah, I know what I'm saying, it's a pretty natural, you know, it's a natural question and in-house cycle sort of design, it's not that alien to people, and I think once...
You're operating appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, but you have to have this kind of choice.
Yeah, you have to.
You know, this kind of opportunity to learn about what the pulse is of the school.
Hi, Dan. Okay. Anything else, any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry what I said about the, the master schedule being done, and it's top secret. Well, that is true, in a week it won't be top secret, or in two weeks, I mean, I guess it's that feedback till Friday, and then it'll take us another week to iron out with all of that feedback. So, but from the, the most difficult, we're going in, in terms of the, the, the large end of the funnel, that's already all in, so...
Just a question of tweaking and adjusting.
Yes, and very little of that at this point.
Congratulations.
Twitter Galrick, Melanie Zulinski, and Sarah Grasso.
Let's focus them.
And Mary Martin. I just kept pushing.
That's great, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Moving on?
Yep.
Oh, does anyone need a copy of the report, my superintendent's report? I did get it out, and I sent it out twice, the first, following up on Joe's comment. I did it twice, because the first time I found a typo, and then I added a paragraph, which actually, I'll tell you which one it is, because it is noteworthy.
This is the new and improved, right?
This is the new improved version, and if you have the new improved version, it's under student learning and staff learning, you have four numbers rather than three. You may have noted I added number four. And just to call your attention to that, I have to say, it's, it's quite something to note that in this supervisory union, for the first time in history, every resident has the opportunity to access a publicly supported pre-K opportunity, learning opportunity for their child.
That's great.
That's because Stratton has accepted a VCPC grant, which I've forgotten what that is, but it's for large community partnerships, or something, pre-K, something. It's a, it's a group that's trying to have a, a bridge grant, because when school districts start pre-K, which you haven't been in the business of doing, the state only reimburses for, or funds a rolling average of three years of, of student enrollment. So if you start out next year with the program, and you have four kids, you're only going to get funded for one and a third of them, or one and two thirds of them. So this helps get the, get the ball rolling, and the Stratton Board formally voted last week to accept that grant and proceed with the program. And what that means is that, and spread the word, is that certainly if you're in Townsend or in a school that, in a school district that has a pre-K, then you just sign up and enroll for this public school. But if you're in Marlborough, Brookline, Nufen, Stratton, or Lenhall, you have to complete a one-page enrollment form indicating your child's age, where they want to go to school, and that gets to me, and then I issue the contracts for, with the payment. I'm trying to centralize that, so it's a standardized situation, and the provider receives only one contract. The source of money may be from two or three different school districts. Then the other thing, the first one, is I think very important, and a highlight of our indication of student learning, that is the Journey East show, if you, some of you were there at the show. And the program is right there, Jay.
Oh, it's big fast, I don't see it.
That, that program, that's, no, the little, the colored photo, this is a program from the Journey East show, and this is the show that they took on tour for, it was tour, more than two weeks, it's really, four weeks. And it's, it's called Spontaneous Combustion, and if you saw it, you would see, say that it's pretty aptly named. And I have to say that the, the video that was shared at the show of our students in China on the stage in Ho-Hot, performing a Mongolian traditional dance, like horse riding thing across the plains, was unbelievable. I mean, these, our kids were really, really looking good, you know, they were really working on it.
Especially the boys were really looking good.
Oh, it was outstanding with the guys, yeah. I mean, what, Eric, Eric Ginter was like the lead for this thing, with the lead woman. And anyway, that is another thing that I did want to have, make sure the public took note of, and that is that the, the program has evolved over time, so that we can have that kind of commitment and involvement from our Chinese counterparts. And I'm sure that the recent, recent sister school agreements, if we continue to be willing to invest the time in the relationship, will grow. That's the secret to working things, having things work well in Asia. We're into glad hand, let's shake, and we'll go right at it. Well, in Asia, you've got to invest the time to build the confidence and trust. And so, you know, we've been at it for quite a while here at Leland and Gray, and we're beginning to, we're continuing to see increasing benefits to our students in terms of their experience and the depth of relationship with their counterparts in China. So I want to quick to commend Tom Connor for his long-term commitment. Baman Madavi here was responsible for the website, and took care of all that. Many people volunteered to make this all successful. And as I said, well, I don't think I pointed out here, but if you would like to have a student this summer, there are short-term opportunities to host Chinese students. There are two summer camps, running one one week long, one two weeks long, where the Chinese students will have a home stay with family in our, in our region. And they'll have classes here at the school, and some field trips, that you teach about American culture and give them opportunity to practice and get better at English.
Were the dates on those?
I don't have them in my head, they're in July.
What, they're in July?
Yeah. I think, they're both in July.
Some back to the program.
Some in the back of that, okay.
Okay, some back to the program, they're good, okay. So, any questions about that, or, I know that, you know, we, we look forward to having a detailed presentation at your next meeting.
Sure.
In June. Tom Connor just got back with the group, they just put on the show. Not really quite calmed down enough yet to do a good job for you here, but Durin will be assisting with that, and make sure it's all set up for your next meeting.
Durin, were you at the show? I did, I thought you would have appreciated the comments from the students that talked about their impression of student learning in China. They were less than impressed, I mean, they were sort of stunned by the amount of work with those kids. Didn't you, did you get the...
Well, I think, you know, I summarized the relationship, and I think Tom spoke to this somewhat, that the, the Chinese very much aspire, as I said in my notes, to our students' creativity, spontaneity, can-do, you know, in fact, kind of oblivious to how difficult something might be, or whatever. Because, you know, our kids aren't usually willing, what we learn from the Chinese is the amount of dedication, time, and discipline it takes, the long hours of practice it takes to become really good at...
At something, yeah.
But, at something. But the Chinese are very fascinated with our kids being able to do so many different things, and not having to be forced to be so focused on one thing in order to succeed. And of course, that's a cultural difference, it's quite significant, it's not gonna go away, but it's, you know, if you, if you don't have a reason to learn from the other side, you don't have a reciprocal relationship that's gonna last. And I think this is exactly the, the gain that our students get from going there, and the gain that their students see in ours, and gain from coming here.
Sure.
So it's...
Doesn't it bring us back to that conversation we had about multitasking?
Well...
Just thought I'd drop that one, because, you know...
Yeah, well, it's, you know, anyway, that's the joy, that's the joy of cross-cultural adventures and, and broadening experience. Yeah.
We, they want to move, you know...
Let's keep moving, yeah, go ahead.
Because I was just gonna say, you may want to, you had mentioned in your report that you were gonna highlight...
Oh, yes, yes, okay, good, well, I was gonna go down the line here a little bit.
Okay, oh, okay, fine.
So let me just take it in order.
Yep.
The next thing about policy and regulation, there are four policies listed there. You do have them now by email. I do have hard copies here, if you're having trouble with your email, and if you indicate which ones you need, we can make copies for you, a hard copy, before you leave. Because when you approach your next meeting in June, you will expect, you may expect to see, depending on Emily's advice and, and comments she may receive from you, put that on the consent agenda, at least the first three, the BO3, the B3, the F5, and the F27 are ones that do not require any revision. So you could review those, and we could consider those reviewed, and we don't have to warn them, or we're not changing anything, so you just note, I just note in your policy handbook that you originally approved them on the date list.
We adopted it on a specific date.
If you adopted it on a specific date, and then you reviewed on this date five years later or so, so, you know, you're in good shape. That's part of the renewal, you know, revision process. But this F20 on harassment, the legisla... But this F20 on harassment, the legislature, or at least the DOE, has changed a couple of lines. So you'll see in one of my emails, and get to the right one, that you'll see underlines. There's a sentence underlined in the first paragraph, and then later on, there's one other change. And they're not major, but they are important to have, so. And then it also has an appendix A that lists the people to whom someone should report. An issue of harassment, that's Melanie Zulinski, our counselor, Durin, Durin, principal, or myself. That's an appendix A. So if you look at that, that would require a warning and then a subsequent adoption, a consideration for adoption, and a subsequent meeting. So that's, that'd be on the agenda for next, next month.
So if you're looking at your emails, I don't know, you have copies, but if you're looking at emails, it's the second one you sent to us on there.
Just make sure I have my name on that. That one looks like the short one.
This, no, I think, see, this is.
Anyway, the only difference between, they actually both have the same language, but I did underline it more thoroughly in one of them, and I added my name as another person to report to.
So you can't, right, so you can't, that's one way to tell, because they're underlined in both.
Yes, the first paragraph is.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's the second.
Anyway, call if you're confused, and we'll get you straight down. Now, let's see, other things there. I don't think Emily and I have.
We're going to, so we're going to do that at, is it June, is it June?
Yeah, I propose that we do this at June, so I'm prepared. And, you know, as I said, the first three don't, the other three don't require.
But you should review them.
But you should look and make sure they still sit really well. It's just that since they're mandated, you don't have much choice about changing the language.
No, but I think it's important we review. Go ahead.
We're going to be having a special meeting for just reviewing these things, or just a regular?
No.
No. There won't be, you talk about policy committee, no, there won't be a policy committee. They're not being changed. There's no recommendations coming from either the administration or the committee, so there's no need.
And on the harassment policy, the language changes are ones according to the DOE, so I don't have any choice about advising you not to do it.
Yeah, it's new legislation.
I mean, this is the irony of our power to establish policy school boards.
But this one's important, so, you know.
It's nine pages long, too. It's not easy to get to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll look for that in June.
All right. Now, legislature adjourned Saturday night late? I don't have anything to report further than what I said in my report here. The 753, which has to do with the Red Committee, was passed legislation to improve the Act 153.
Right, it is the technical amendment, so to speak, at one point.
I haven't got a copy of the latest edition of that, but I, what Emily and I will relate is from the Vermont School Board Association and the Vermont Superintendent's Association, the summary brief of all the legislation related to education.
It got moved around a lot in the last few days even. Pieces of bills got all of a sudden attached to other ones. That was one of the big problems with 753. They attached AGCD to it. It had been on a different Senate bill before that, and that ended up being taken off at the last one, which was good, because it really weren't really.
So I did speak in my report about the Red, but we, that's on the agenda, yeah, so we'll save that. Now let's get on to finance. I think that was in, oh, it's. Keep in mind that your May 23 meeting, the auditor's report needs action. It's an annual report, annual audit of the WCSU books. The contracts have been issued to your professional staff. They have to be returned by May 15. So, you know, we'll know where we stand on our employment and what openings Durin may have to fill. We don't expect any or any, we don't expect many. I'm going to turn on the lights here for the TV. We're saving electricity here. Okay, let's move on down to enrollment and staffing. I do want to report that we have hired a AD, Student Activities Director, for next year, Marty Pesto, and I think Durin and I are both very confident that this is an excellent choice. He was a teacher, coach, athletic director at Kingsdale. A little bit smaller school than I was actually, so I was, I was pretty concerned that, you know, someone coming to this position would not recognize to what extent we have to share students and share facilities, you know, between the drama and the sports. So he seemed to be right, right on target with that. And he also is an assistant coach, presently counseling students, athletes, at Keene State College. And so he's interested in getting into the school athletic director type of position. And he does want to continue, and we certainly approve him continuing as assistant coach for the varsity baseball team at Keene State. So in the spring season, you know, he'll have some other commitments, but we're pretty sure that by that time, we can work that out. I mean, we have the same expectations for performance and workload here. But I just, I'm pretty excited about somebody being connected with that bigger, you know, world of athletic proficiency, achievement.
And higher education.
And higher education, that's right, yeah. Well, the counseling aspect, too, was very interesting. So.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, I, well, I wouldn't mind having a motion to approve, but we have, we have concluded the agreement, and I did hire it because it's a non-licensed position.
Right.
That's by the law, new law now. I, I'm the one that has to take the heat for doing that, making good choice.
That's the reason I asked.
Yeah, it's not, it's actually July 1st, I think, delayed 2013. So you could say, yeah, you could say you better make a motion, if you want. But it's up to you as a board, what you, I proceeded, and I hope that you approve.
I'm not hearing any objections now.
I'll make the motion, move to approve, Marty.
Pesto is some kind of the Athletic and Activities Director.
Okay, thank you. So you second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, okay. Any comments, questions?
I'm just, I'm curious, is how many applicants apply?
We have.
Over 50.
Wow.
Five though?
We interviewed five. We were a very diverse interview committee. It was chaired by Tammy Hodgson, Annie Landberger, and myself to review the applications, and then we assembled the team. We had parents of athletes, parents of lesbians, about six students from each area of interest, and two other staff members. So candidates came in, they had a crowd all lined up, ready. It was a marvelous process.
And, yeah, before agreeing the terms, I interviewed individually.
Yep.
I felt satisfied.
They had three interviews.
About each candidate?
No, the top, the process was that the interview committee passed on the names of those who they felt would make good athletic directors. Of the five we interviewed, they could pass on more than three. They should say no more than three. So they went to the next two interviews.
Just out of curiosity, the last time this position was put out for hiring, how many applicants did you have?
Very few. It was in July.
Was it a timing issue?
Twenty, maybe?
I wonder if it's also an accountability issue.
Well.
Was Marty also your first choice?
Although we had some tough candidates.
He was one of the top candidates.
Great amount, two years.
Yeah, it was tough, I was talking about.
Yeah, it was, and I think almost. I do think it does, the timing makes a big deal. I also think that we're fairly attractive.
Hopefully, it's another two, right?
Yeah. I have total confidence. Okay, so if there's no other comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. And opposed, abstentions, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. I think there's nothing else except listed the meetings and so forth.
You track them, those are important.
We do have a summer date, summer retreat date. You might mark your calendars in August there.
And that's for all school board members, not just the reps. For when, I mean, nobody's going to twist your arm if you're not there, but it is open to all school board members. Great if you go to town.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Stephen.
Okay, here's a financial report. So I'll give you an overview and open to questions. It'll be the usual relatively brief report. This is through year-to-date, as of today. And as you know, we're very close to the end of the fiscal year. Also, maybe just as a reminder, this budget, $6,328, was the budget that was slightly less than the year prior. $6,332 was the prior year. So we had many discussions about staff changes, and then we went through the cycle of federal jobs bill grant and restoring positions and so on. So you will now begin to see, this point in the year, the variances. There were, there are many variances against this original plan, the $6,328,984 for fiscal year 12. Just briefly, in the English department, we had a retirement. In the foreign language, we increased the FTE. Remember, there was a reduction, and then we restored that position because of the federal jobs bill. Then we had a retirement in math, so there was turnover. We increased the music department from what was initially reduced, again, through the federal jobs bill. We had some turnover in science, so we had a new position there. As you recall, Durin had recommended administrative restructuring, which was primarily bringing in the Director of Student Services. So that impacted counseling as well as the principal's office. So in all of those functions, which are many, we will see variances against the budget plan. When we roll it all up, I see that the fiscal year on the expense side is going to come in relatively close in total to the $6,328 that we had budgeted. Year-to-date, we spent $5,437. We got a 14% amount to spend, or $891,000. I think we will finish up the fiscal year relatively close to that number. So despite lots of pluses and minuses, we've managed to make sure that we made all these decisions within the resources that the voters had approved. On the revenue side, we had similar variances. The biggest one is the federal jobs bill. We will, we will record $80,000 in additional revenues over the budget plan. That will show up there under governmental grants and aid when we're all done. You see that we have a $723,000 receivable still there, and that is primarily the fourth quarter expenses, or assessments that, you recall, Act 60, Act 68 has the towns collect on behalf of the state, and then they send us, they send us their money. So NuFane, I think, is still paying their quarterly and probably Townsend as well. But I expect that we will, we will receive our $5,174 plus some additional revenues from the federal jobs bill. On the unfavorable side, I had mentioned before that our tuition revenue has not held up to our original plan. Just as in our member town, we saw some decline in enrollment early in the year against what was originally planned. We have seen some decline in enrollment in our tuition towns as well. But overall, I think that we will probably still be close to the budget revenue plan and net out fiscally in good shape. So those, that's a quick overview of the revenue and expenses. The next page is the balance sheet, and you can see that now, which is typical this time of year, when you look at the bottom line there, total equity and reserves, $135,000, much, much smaller than the numbers you've been seeing. You know, and that, that means it's a credit, means it's favorable. That's good. But this will be why, next meeting, I'll ask for a tax anticipation note again, because you can see under the liabilities, we have that million-dollar notes payable. We'll have to pay that off in June, and cash flow will probably require us to borrow in anticipation of taxes. But in terms of solvency, I think we'll be in, we'll be in pretty good shape. So, might I answer any questions that I have? Kevin?
So we haven't had any big surprises?
There's been a lot of variances, but no, no, nothing that we didn't deliberate over and plan for on the expense side. On the revenue side, we are short at least, at least six or seven kids. It's still hard to tell just where we'll end up, because we still have some movement. But at $13,430 a student, that adds up pretty quickly. Yeah, and so we'll, we'll approach $100,000 short of tuition revenue.
So what's happened then is the kids have graduated, and we don't have new ones coming in? Is that what's happened, or have they moved out?
This year, this year, in terms of tuition, we've had more kids go to the Career Center than what we would have expected, and when that happens, we, if they're a Dover student, we don't, we obviously don't bill Dover for those students, the Brattleboro Regional Career Center does. So that's the competition that we talk about, that Career Center creates for us. But obviously, they're excellent programs, and students are encouraged to access them. So that's one thing. And then, just as at the beginning of the year, you may remember, we had 400 students as we expected, and we quickly went down to 375. And that was just, you know, probably something to do with the nature of the economy. And then it's the, as the weak winter developed, we know we had a lot of employment at Stratton in Mount Snow, and I think we, we just didn't hold on to, you know, those students. So, so actually, in all of our tuition towns, we've seen less than what we knew of, which is, we look at sixth graders coming in, we look at graduating seniors, we make an estimate of kids that may choose to go to the Career Center, and that's our projection. It's generally been pretty accurate, so. But fortunately, there are other increases in revenues that are going to offset, substantially offset it, not entirely, but substantially offset it.
So we know that there's more competition, no matter what. I mean, what you said, Frank, is true. There's not only declining enrollment in our member towns, but there's declining enrollment everywhere in this whole state of Vermont. And there's much greater competition for every student, in public and private now. So I guess when you're talking about projections, there may have to be a new outlook on projections, which is really tough. But it also is so, why it's so important that we remain, you know, a practice school with high-level academics and a variety of programs, because no matter what, we need tuition students.
Right, and the initiative that, I don't know if we're going to talk about it tonight, that's given the Journey East agenda item has been moved, but there's significant work at that level to attract international students that, you know, now that we're certified to receive and charge tuition, you know, this is the sort of example of why that's more and more important, that we pursue that.
Plus with Dover using Burn Burton's tuition as their base, right? So they don't have to pay extra to go to Burn Burton. Is that how that worked?
Well, yeah, there was a public town meeting, public meeting. They warned the fact that, does the town want to pay the full freight of a private tuition at Burn Burton?
Right.
And the board reported to me that at the meeting, I mean, this is what's going on politically out there. At the, at the meeting, at the town meeting, the vote went 84 to 62, or something like that. I remember the 84, 60-something. So the motion passed, and according to the board members, after that motion passed, about 84 people left the meeting. Which, they may be exaggerating, because I wasn't there, but I'm just saying that, you know, that's, that's, that's the, you know, that's the political, I mean, that's the political arena, those are the rules. I mean, that's the political arena, those are the rules of how schools are funded and how decisions are made, and so it's an example of, I think, a very active private sector, independent schools, you know, encouraging parents to express their opinion and make sure that their town is willing to support their tuition to the private school in those towns that have it short. So, Wind Hall, Stratton, Dover, and so forth. It is a sign of the times, in terms of increased competition, which the private schools are experiencing as well. They have to maintain their enrollment, so we shouldn't be surprised that this is happening, but it is a different environment than ten years ago, or ten, believe it, five years ago.
There's a reason why all these people were doing that.
Right, there's no question, we used to get a lot more Dover students than we do now.
We've talked about this before, Stephen, but now, since it's getting towards the end of the year, is there anything, now is the time that you can make an impression on families that are trying to make a decision?
Well, Durin can speak to the plan, but there's a recruiting situation that goes on. We have to go to the, I always went to these fairs too, you know, where we went to Graff and we went to Dover and so forth, and presented what the traction or what the program, strength of programs are here at Leland Gray.
We never called it recruiting back then.
No, but now it really is, where you're invited, and there are five or six other schools, three of them private and so forth, that, you know, have their materials and their presentation out there, and, you know, it's over seven kids or something, and it's, but it's a good, I think it's a good exercise in terms of our own staff, our people who, including Durin, who represents the school. It certainly is another thing to do, that at one time, you didn't expect it from your principal, or your administration, or your key members of counseling, or, you know, instructional staff.
Faculty.
Faculty, instructional staff. So, anyway, but I, you know, I did report at previous meeting that we have accepted for tuition, twelve, isn't it twelve students that come Graff and, I mean, twelve outside tuition students, grade nine, wasn't that the total?
We'll have fifteen students here next year by school choice, but there's tuition, there's no tuition.
No, that's at the high school. But we do have, you know, this is partially based on students who have come here and paid tuition in grades seven and eight.
Yes.
So, that's part of our business, a little bit different too than what you have been used to in the past, and I think it's, the present political environment, parents are looking for what's best for their kids and exercising their choices.
That's important.
Do we have anybody who does things like here, who sends out press releases, pictures, video to all, like WCAX regularly with everything that we do?
I mean, a PR person?
Yeah, a PR person.
We've actually talked about it at an SU level for years.
We do have people, in a sense, doing that kind of work all the time, but on a regular basis, funnel through one person, no.
No title?
No, but not even one person. So, when Journey East returned, there was a huge splash in the paper, it's so beautiful. With every theater production, there's usually a big thing in the paper about that as well. I send press releases, but the regularity in having a PR person, I think, would be a wonderful thing.
We've had proposals before, I think probably before you were on the board, hey, I don't think it's been in the last number of years, but we've had proposals to us, because we've requested them as a board, and every time we've had those proposals, the board has made the decision to, that putting money into academics was more important, and so we didn't want to commit to the money. It's becoming a bigger and bigger deal all the time, of course.
Was it a lot of them?
Some of them did turn out, in the whole scheme of things, I can't remember the numbers, but in the scheme of things, the board felt it was more money than we could afford to commit to a position, but everybody recognized the value and the need, and so maybe it's time for us to look at it again.
Or even if there's a core, one of the courses, one of the programs, you know, where the kids could have that as part of their course work.
Right, we had that, in fact, Anne Linderberger had a class where we-
Writing for publication.
Right, and they didn't publish things, they did use that, I don't know if that class is still-
It looks like it's running next year.
Oh, wow.
Wasn't there like videos on what's good about Leland Gray or something that the kids put together?
Oh, yeah.
There were public service announcements created, yes, and just splash.
I was wondering, maybe an open house or something, I don't know, in today's world, is it worth doing something like that? Do you think you'd get much out of it?
You mean inviting the communities in for open house, for, come see our school?
Meet the board, meet the teachers, you know, here's what we do, here's what's different. Leland Gray, Journey East, you know, so different, things like that.
Jay's on the Career Center Regional Advisory Board, and he says the Career Center does that.
Do they get a turnout?
Oh, yeah.
So, they're also right in Brattleboro, yes, a huge population.
Well, they have particular programs that people-
But they're inviting all the surrounding schools.
Right, and they're reaching out to the surrounding schools.
Even if you get a little publicity doing it, it shows people that, you know, you care enough about yourself to invite them to come see it, you know, I don't know, it just, you might not get a huge bang right away, but I think-
And I think our taxpayers would appreciate the fact that we are putting ourselves out there, we're making efforts to, you know, it shows them that, yes, we're working on that.
And I think all this is great, the only thing I would, I don't mean to tamp it down at all, but I'm just saying, if we're no pay, you know, if we don't commit dollars to it, then we're leaning on staff.
It's really going to come up.
Very tight, you know-
It's going to come up again in your budget considerations in the fall, and, you know-
So, let's think about whether we want to commit dollars to it.
You know Burn Burton's spending a lot of money on this, and they have somebody assigned, and they have somebody contracted to get results, and, you know, we're not, we don't-
We have taxpayer dollars, and they have a balance.
Not been able to afford it.
And that's a big difference, so, but I think it's worth looking.
We do go to all of the area elementary schools, and they'll let us through the doors, and as Ben has said already, they, their kind of school fairs that they'll have in the evening are very competitive. I attended to, at Marlborough, there were nine schools represented, nine eighth graders choosing where to go for high school.
Wow.
Nine kids, nine schools, that's amazing.
I do know from experience that there is a perception, a negative perception out there about Leland and Gray, and I think the more press that we can do, the more of our positive things that we can splash out there, that eventually it might turn that, that people will say, well, wait a minute, I've seen this, this, and this, and this.
You know, it was interesting, I was testifying up in Montpelier, there's a different perception also out there about Leland and Gray, and I was testifying in a committee, a senate committee up in Montpelier, and our own Wyndham County senator is on that, Peter Galbraith, and he had some wonderful things to say about Leland and Gray to a ton of very important statewide legislators and to me, and I was really pleased, and I don't know if I remembered reporting back to you guys on that or not, but it was very nice to hear that from Senator Galbraith, and so there's a lot of really good press out there about Leland and Gray too, and I think that's the things we want to hold on to.
More is better on that, you know, because they're-
Right, we need to keep focusing on that, because we are a good school.
Yes, we're a wonderful school, and have so many exciting things happening that it's important for us to toot our horn.
Right, it is.
More and more and more, doing the best we can without an identified person.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But I appreciate the encouragement.
Yeah. Well, we'll look at it, I'd love you. Okay, any other questions?
Two financial officers, I think it's finished.
Okay, is that it? We kind of took your report and ran with it.
That's good. That's what it's for. Thanks for that.
Good to know that you can prompt us over.
Watching from my pad.
Yeah, okay, so, Red is up next, am I right? Regional Education District Study Committee, we met on May second, that was last Wednesday. I'm looking at the agenda, boy, we had a busy meeting, and I'll let both Bruce and Joe chime in, but just briefly, I'll just mention that we did look at the, again, we took a second look at estimating comparison of programs and staffing between existing schools. This is in relation to if the towns of Jamaica, Townsend, and Wyndham decide they want to get together and build a new school, then we wanted to know what it was going to look like. So, we did take, Frank had worked real hard on that and getting his hand up for us, and we looked at that. We looked at, there's legislation, we didn't discuss legislation too much, because we were waiting on the end of the legislative session, so we're going to discuss more about that. We did look at a roadmap and a timeline for our study committee, and the, probably the most important thing that we looked at was a draft of the articles, draft articles of agreement, and so we're still, this is still early and at that stage, but we really felt, the committee really felt that it was time for us to look at a draft of that, because we needed to know what it was going to look like if we're going to move forward. There's still talk about a possible, if we decide to move forward with this, possibly in November, I think there's a lot of people sitting on that committee who felt November was pretty darn quick, but, you guys want to share anything?
November, as far as making what decision, I'm going to say?
A vote to former Red, the five towns, to former Red, the regional education.
It's been a while.
Yeah, we've been talking since August, I think we had our first meeting, and we've been bantering around a lot of things, and we're sort of narrowing it down and getting a little more focus, which is good, because, you know, there's a real variety of perspectives sitting on that committee, and there's community members as well as board members.
What drove the discussion with the elementary school, was it?
Jamaica.
Okay.
I will say-
I'm curious if it was a single town or all three towns?
Well, I would say, I think those three towns have all been interested, but the first, it was brought up first by the town of Jamaica, by a board member from Jamaica.
Yeah, Jamaica and Townsend had talked independently, board to board, about-
Jamaica approached Townsend, I think, first.
Right, about doing it, and when Jamaica brought it to the Red, Wyndham actually said, we'd be interested in this as well, and, you know, the preliminary numbers, there's a fairly significant savings, you know, half a million dollars, and, you know, increased opportunity for the kids, you know, you save it in administration, you know, some of the same savings that was realized when they put Newbrook together.
Right.
That opportunity exists.
And because we've done that, I think it made it a little easier, and we'll let you speak to it, Frank, if you want, but it made it a little easier for us to come up with these hypothetical numbers, because we have actual, a situation we've actually done with-
Is that just based on a school that fits X amount of kids, not where it is and that, or does the details go into that?
The details did go in from the point of view of looking at a pre-K through six curriculum, looking at specifically Jamaica, Townsend, and Wyndham's programs, assembling that existing population, which turns out to be very close to the Newbrook population. So, when you have a similar student body with existing Wyndham Central resources that are supporting that for special ed guidance, all of the, what they call the specials, you know, the itinerant teachers, it makes the modeling a hypothetical, very straightforward, you know, very straightforward in terms of student-teacher ratios, and then salaries, because we're all in the same contract, and then because bond rates are historically at a, you know, many, many, many-year low, the difference between a twenty-year bond rate payment and the capital improvements that all of these buildings are beyond their original bond improvements, so they're upping new roofs, new boilers, new, you know, new drainage plans and so on. It's both, educationally, opportunity looks very favorable, and the economics look very favorable.
I will just mention once again that while Leland and Gray doesn't have an official role, we are represented by the three of us representing our towns on there, and I think that the perspective of Leland and Gray is pretty important to the Red Committee, because we already operate in a similar fashion anyway, and sometimes we're able to, you know, answer a question about a concern that board members may have, or community members may have, so...
Is there advantages, I don't remember, is there advantages to making an early decision in November as far as the state goes and money, is there anything like that, or?
No advantage to time, no.
Other than realizing the opportunity for another, probably as, you know, whatever the timeframe is, but a group of kids, you know, every year, group leads.
But the incentive isn't.
I couldn't remember if there was any kind of-
Yeah, no, I mean, there's certainly plenty of reasons, and the conversation did stir a little bit around when is the best time to go out, and of course, to voters, and of course, Leland and Gray has quite a bit of experience going out with bonds to voters at different times of the year, so we've had that conversation.
There been any discussion as to where the school will be located?
Yeah, it's really, is it in West Townsend or East to make?
Because the corner of thirty and a hundred, isn't it, in that bar?
Yeah, it's at the corner of one hundred and thirty, essentially, I tell you the truth, I'm not sure, I'm not too involved, and being from Newfane, I stay out of it as much as possible, because it's really nothing to do with Newfane.
So, it would be a new facility?
But it is a, yes, it would be a new facility, and the land would need to be purchased.
To be serving the, you know, to be centrally located, it has to be either at that intersection or somewhere in West Townsend, I mean, that's the logical place for that.
Needs to be attractive to Wyndham, who's up, ten miles up out of West Townsend and Jamaica and-
So, what's the idea for the numbers that you're going to build, if this was to go through, what's the capacity of that?
Probably a two-hundred-student facility, right now, the existing population is about, I think, a hundred and seventy, and the idea would be that there's no projection out in the next ten years that would say that we're going to be growing. However, I would think if this actually gets legs, just like this building did in nineteen seventy, you would build it so that additions could be added, so, you know, likely do the site work that lays the pipe and the infrastructure for additions down the road.
There's also, the other piece I think that's important, is that if we get, if those three towns really are serious about moving forward with this, and there's not been, there's been mostly just positive feedback so far, at our committee level, anyway, I'm not sure, you'd have to speak to the individual board meetings. But, you know, there's a possibility, if this is really going to move forward, that maybe Wardsboro would be interested, or maybe someone else would be interested, so then that may have, that might change the size of the building. But, you know, like Frank said, I think it makes sense to be prepared if people aren't jumping in before, that there's a very good possibility that there'll be a need, a lot more opportunities.
Current buildings.
That's a good question, and I mean, what's happened to Brookline is that Brookline is now being leased by a pre-K program, am I right?
Is it tied to another?
Yeah, so there's opportunities for those buildings, I mean, you know, Wyndham Central has to rent, maybe they could, many SU buildings are within school buildings around the state, and that would be one of the opportunities possibly, who knows, each town would have to decide that on their own.
Well, they would all, under the draft articles of the Red, they all become part of the Red, and then if the Red, if they're not used in by the Red, then they go back to the towns, and the towns can do whatever they want.
So, does the town vote for this Red, like, how, what?
Yes, each town.
Like typically, a special vote is called?
Yeah, they're, yeah, well, that's why the idea is to have it in November or perhaps March, I mean, have it at a time when people are normally thinking about voting.
Yeah, you get them out of the software and about-
Yeah, so, but it does require after, I should outline the process again for you, so, we're working on the articles, the committee's working on the articles now, the consultant is going to come back with the articles refined and edited following the discussion they had at the last meeting.
Based on our feedback.
So, at the June meeting, we'll have articles that are perhaps pretty close to being in a, in a released draft discussion form that is, you know, sufficiently good, so that, I mentioned in July, the Red Committee may invite, in fact, all board members of all the boards involved, including the Leland and Gray board, to come together in a meeting in July, to actually look at these articles, because one possibility is to present those articles to the State Board of Education, which is required by the law for approval, because the State Board wants to make sure that the articles meet the needs, or meets their perceived needs of what should be happening in terms of encouraging and benefiting from the tax breaks and so forth to do this. So, that's kind of the earliest possible time piece that could go on, and that would be sufficient time in terms of warning obligation and posting and discussion and public meetings to look to a vote in that November election. The November elections likely have the most people. Some people would say, well, that's the likely time when it would be defeated, or, you know, it's better to have more people out there, and, you know, don't make it a special meeting where only a few people come. But that's really decisions to be made in the future, okay? But I just want to make sure you know what the possibilities are, and the articles are moving along pretty quickly. I mean, I think that a very good draft will be available at our next meeting.
Yeah, I think so too, and there'll be a six to eight-week public or community engagement process too, that's prior to the vote, to make sure that everybody's aware and knows, and that's a pretty thorough plan.
Interestingly, the Act seven fifty-three has made an adjustment, which- Interestingly, the Act seven fifty-three has made an adjustment which makes it possible if the five towns are voting and only four of them approve, the Red can still go forward.
Without-
It used to be that everybody had to be approving, and the legislature has noted that of the efforts to form regional education districts, however well-intended, most of them have been defeated by one town not agreeing.
So that's been amended, so now, so a town can be like the lone one out, or a school district, right?
School district, yeah, it's, but that's, well, Leona Gray is not a separate school district in this-
Yep, but theoretically, that's, has that happened in the state yet?
No, just passed, that's-
That was just passed on Saturday night.
But I think it's really important that we make sure that we do our homework, and we do the community engagements so that, appropriately, so that, you know, no one's, I, I think over the course of several Reds that have come up, there's been a lot of misinformation, and I'm not trying to fault any other Red Committee or anything, but, you know, in the early stages of this process, there's a lot of negative around it, and a lot of fear for that kind of change, and I, you know, I think every board and every committee that works toward presenting this kind of thing to communities, it just becomes a little easier for people to understand, and maybe, you know, what's really important is how we present, and, and what is the, what is the advantage for our students.
And if you can answer those questions, people will make a good decision.
Exactly.
Voting against some, they don't, they just don't understand.
Right, and I wanna, you know, it'd be great if we do decide to move forward, if everybody agrees, that'd be wonderful, but if they don't, then, you know, there's an alternative.
The only thing I would highlight about increased learning opportunity, if those of you are familiar with Brookline, Newfane experience, is that the students from Brookline from the smaller school did have the advantage of more PE, more art, more music, and more counseling, you know, what we consider the, important for the whole child's development, and without increasing costs, in fact, reducing costs. So we projected the same kind of thing regarding this possibility of a new school. Also, I put in there an additional full-time FTE, full-time teacher, because the committee has talked about expanding the opportunity for foreign language, for second language instruction at the elementary school level, and so that's something that would also be if, if Newfane-Brookline, which doesn't have that at New Brook right now, that they're part of the Red, I mean, this is obviously something that you would do universally, and which I would advocate actually throughout the WCSU, but I'm just saying that this, this provides a, actually, an opportunity of providing that increased, you know, opportunity for learning without increasing cost, I mean, it's, you know.
So is there gonna be a cap, like especially in the younger grades, for class size, or?
Well, yeah, we have to say, I mean, it's the same situation that we have, there is a, there already is a class size policy recommended and so forth, and in fact, the, the premise that we were looking at was, you know, when you divide the number of students by the FTEs and so forth, somewhere in the neighborhood of what Brookline-Newfane has, I mean, it's nothing like twenty-five or twenty-
Which is thirteen to fifteen or something.
I think they're fifteen point nine, and we're talking maybe about seventeen.
Seventeen now, or seventeen, and then the other one being fifteen.
Per classroom teacher.
Yeah, as opposed to, you know, when you add in the nurse and the guidance and everybody else, that number usually is around nine or ten, but, but classroom teacher is about an average class size of eighteen, seventeen, eighteen kids, yes.
And that's great, and that's something that's very hard to maintain in very, very small schools. I did encourage, Mikey emailed, I forgot to tell you in the beginning, he might be late, and I encouraged him to come late, he was at work.
And he wasn't.
It's okay, I'm glad you were here. So, anyway, this is a good, this is a good conversation.
Yeah.
It's really important, and while we don't have an official role, we do at Leona Gray, you know, this is, this will impact us greatly, you know, so it's, it's something that we need to make sure that we are aware of, and we're involved, and we're, you know, taking a positive perspective. So come to the meetings, you know, there's actually no-
See, and all that information is available on the Red site, you know, when you go to WCSU Board and you go to Red Committee, you will see this information.
Yeah, all the information is available online, and it's draft, of course, and, you know, there's, we're still working on all this, but it all says draft, the roadmap is draft, so keep looking if you can't come. Okay, any other comments or questions, or do two of you wanna say anything more?
It seems like more and more people ought to come to the, to the committee meetings because there's actually some meat out there now to chew on, and more and more people are gonna have to, the public is gonna have to get informed on this as it moves forward.
Yeah, we're getting excited, I think, on the committee, on the possibilities.
Did you guys sense even on the committee itself, that at the beginning of the meetings, it might have been even committee members that were more, you know, not looking at it as much as now, more opening their eyes and seeing more, I mean, is it obvious even on the committee, you think?
Yeah, I think it's become much more of a reality where it was just a concept before, and they're, you know, I'm not, I don't think anyone came in with a negative.
Right.
But I, but I do think that it's been much more refined, and people are much more focused on the outcomes, now that we've looked at, we've spent a whole meeting on looking at student learning opportunities and how that would improve, and that, I think that was probably the one meeting that really took us to the next level, you know, this will help our kids, and that's important, you know, that's important to everyone sitting on that committee, it should be important to everyone in every community, in fact, you know, because that's critical.
Are the elementary schools sending out anything with the kids?
No, I think we have to be somewhat cautious about what we send out as being something that is substantive and more definite, it's not very wise to just send out some general thing, and then somebody says, oh, what does this really mean, or what, or how much is it really gonna cost, or what?
Right, but that brings up the point.
So, so what I think is gonna happen is, very shortly, when the articles are in draft form, that is a time when, yes, something could be sent out that would mean something to someone who's reading critically. We're talking about what are the learning opportunities, then we need to have a list and a paper that would point out what-
But taking it from a different level, and I think this is important, I, because I agree with you one hundred percent on, on not sending up, I mean, stuff's available online, so it's there anyway, but making the public aware through the elementary schools' newsletters and all that, just saying, this is ongoing, here's the next Red meeting, please go, you know, in your town, and so those five towns could be doing that if they're not, maybe they are.
Would they, in their newsletters, say, please go to, go to the Red website and keep-
Those parents are the ones who are gonna be-
I thought that they were being linked to the website, so, but, I mean, it's, I think that the challenge will be for the Red Committee to decide what is the piece of information they want to go out and how it is. Unless you, unless you, I don't wanna say control the message in a negative way, but unless you define what the message is, and you agree that that's what is appropriate at this time.
But Stephen, I'm not trying to say anything about the message, just that there will be, you know, and encouraging, but encouraging that in a different format, as opposed to just having it on the website saying, here it is, I mean, actually reaching out and saying, it's an ongoing conversation, it's still happening, in fact, it's very, you know, engaged.
Well, it is, it is actually in the, in the reports that go out, but I, I will check into it.
Yeah, I'm thinking more to the community and parents, that's all.
If it's going home in the newsletter, you have just a little-
That's what I'm talking about, I think that that is, I think that is happening, but I will check into it.
That'd be great, I don't think anybody has elementary kids on this board.
Now that I can pick up Jamaica when it posts up, they're leaving.
Yeah, engaging the parents.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, anything else, any other questions? Not, move on to, let's see, access to driver ed. Durin, did you print out something, did you send something?
I don't-
Durin and I had this conversation before the meeting, I thought she had handed us something at the last meeting, I couldn't find it in my packet, did anybody get anything at the last meeting, and she thought she had-
It was coming.
That's right, and then I looked at the minutes, and I went, oh, okay, it was coming to us, and then we were both confused, so I apologize if I didn't-
A half a cup, yes.
Yeah, and it's here, so I think what we're gonna do is, I, I actually did, the parent who was supposed to come couldn't make it again, and hoped that we would just do what we're doing, what we had said we were gonna do, and that is review the process for students getting into driver ed program at Leona Gray, and so.
So what you're about to see is, it's procedures that we created internally to have equity around driver's ed enrollment, and I had, I actually didn't have concerns that that was not the case previously, but it wasn't written down, and so I met with Melanie Zulinski and Tim Loomis, our driver's ed teacher, to hammer out exactly how this needs to work in order for the communication with the parents to ha, and students, to happen in a timely manner, so they know exactly what they need to do and by when, and that, and that, we can't say they didn't know. So what you have here is some very detailed internal procedures with names and dates and, and who's gonna do what, and, and we have been following them this spring. So we can already tell students who haven't made it in, and perhaps they can be enrolled for the spring semester because they don't have their permit yet by the date they're supposed to have it, and already a student has come to me and said, I don't think you should have your permit before you start the class, you should be able to just come to, and I said, but that's not our procedures, and the reason why you have to have your permit first is because you have to have that commitment, and there's a lot of competition, so get your permit. So it doesn't mean that all the problems will be solved, but now it's much more clearly defined and defendable.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that brings the concerns that were brought forth to rest, are we able to fulfill all the requests for driver's ed every year? Not necessarily, but we did increase it from a halftime position last year to this year, it's point seven five.
Okay.
But in terms of all the driving time that that requires, that's still only three course sections, so sixty kids a year, approximately.
Do we do anything for a kid that didn't get in this time, so that they have front of the line next time or anything, or is it just?
Well, we have a whole criteria, so it depends on where they are in line, when they got, so I, like I have access to a Google Doc with all the names of, of students who might be interested in driver's ed, and that there's, there's, you know, if they have met the criteria, do they get the paperwork, or do they bring in their permit?
Right.
So if, they're not really in line unless they have done those two things.
But it's possible everybody could do what they need to do and not get in because of sheer numbers, right?
Yes.
And so then you have X amount of kids that did everything they should do, and these are the kids that don't get in, so is there any-
So in theory, that's true, but it didn't happen last year, didn't happen, that's not happening this year, it's not happening for next year.
Okay, that's, so it's-
Well, the dispute, to be fair, the dispute over, over this, why it came to us from the one parent was that that parent felt that they, it did happen to them, and they, their child couldn't get into the class when their child should have been in the class, and that was really two parents who felt that way, but, you know, we, they've gone back and spoken to Durin, and I think to you as well, you know, I certainly did direct them back to the administration, because as you know, even though we're looking at these procedures, we don't, you know, dictate these procedures, we don't, we just, the reason we're even having this conversation is because a parent was concerned, and we wanted to make sure the procedures were in place, I think that's good, you know, so, but there are gonna be disputes, I'm sure.
Is offered in this fall and the spring?
And depending on when the birthdays are, is whether the class has two sections in the fall and one section in the spring, or vice versa, the birthday's fall and not paperwork being submitted, so I actually can't remember off the top of my head if it's planned for two, for fall, the two in the fall or the spring right now, but that would, that has already been established.
It's dictated by student demand, I mean, we're trying to be responsive to the most students with available resources we have.
And those of you who remember why we had reduced this, I mean, the funding was so tight, and it was a terrible, it was a difficult decision, you know, and that, and there was such an outpouring of concern by parents that we increased it again, we didn't increase it fall, but we increased it again, so, you know, that's where we're sitting right now, and who knows what'll, what'll hold the future. One thing's for sure, there are students out there who need to work, there are students out there who need to drive siblings, and there are students out there who can't get in for whatever reason to the class when they want it, and it's pretty expensive, you know, it's a pretty expensive course to take outside, I think.
That's five hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, we had offered it, because there was such an outpouring of parents who wanted to have it, especially in the summer, we had offered to provide the services of what would be a reduced cost for them with, with employing our, our own driver teacher, and no one took us up on that, and that was about five hundred and twenty-five, I think, five twenty-five or something, and I think it's about seven hundred or so, if I'm wrong.
It was insufficiently subscribed, there were some people, but not enough to make it workable for the teacher.
The irony is that Leona Gray's a half-credit course, which means it's sixty hours of seat time, and, and I don't say seat time in a negative way, I mean, it's sixty hours of instruction, the state requirement is thirty-two hours. So that, and I don't, there's, there's not very many, I don't know, I don't know if I've ever worked in a school that had a course that was, that was a quarter of a credit, I mean, maybe PE, that, that every other day for, period for a semester or something, but based on the driver's ed curriculum that our teacher follows, he doesn't believe it's possible to do the course in less than sixty hours, he does not feel safe about putting young people on the road with reduced hours, because we have talked about that, given the need, I mean, in theory, we could have almost twice as many students, but driving time is another piece of that, so we would, not really twice as many, maybe fifty percent of them, but it becomes an ethical dilemma, so the state says it only needs to be thirty-two hours, but is that really gonna be enough education for a student to take his life and everyone else's in their own hands?
Yes.
So.
Well, it's a decision that the administration needs to make, when you're good.
Well, and, yeah, yeah, and we did.
So that's good.
Yeah, it sounds like we're, we're making a good decision for, for reasons.
Yeah.
Not just to meet, not just to meet a requirement, but we think it's-
It's best for the kids.
I don't expect the issue will go away completely, unfortunately, like some of the other things, with enrollment declining, money's gonna be tighter, and so, you know, I don't expect this or any other decision to be easy in the future either, so we're just gonna-
Just as a, for perspective, I think the US is the only country in the world where driver's ed is being offered in public high schools.
That's right.
But it's been offered for a very long time, and most parents today got it in driver's ed in high school, you know?
Yeah.
They did, I mean, I, yeah, and so it becomes, it becomes a given.
It's one of those things where, when you're talking to non-US kids, their jaw drops.
Yeah.
They wanna immediately immigrate, you know?
Yeah, I too want to take driver's ed, so that, and I'm too German.
This was private, you paid.
Because they, I pay them too, and they have to pay in Germany, you know.
Well, does anyone have any questions about these procedures that Durin handed out or comments?
Certainly, you can review them and detail-
You have to make a file of them if you have questions.
Inquire individually as a parent or through the board.
Does that post it somewhere easy, for people to?
It's, it's very internal, if I posted every procedure we had for things like this, you'd think we were crazy.
But the kids understand what the expectations are, you make it very clear what they need to do.
That's right, that's right, I mean, and you see the communications on there that the driver's ed teacher has to, has to complete, the letters that go out, the information that comes in through the main office, yes, so in their end, what they experience, they get a quarter of what's on there, they, no kid gets to see a Google Doc and their name and, you know, so.
Yeah, let's make clear to the students.
Yeah, to their parents.
Send it to them, right. And as a parent?
Oh, a student who's taking driver's ed next year.
Let's clear, okay. All right, if there's no questions, if you have any, bring them back at the next meeting. Thank you, Durin.
You're welcome.
Okay, legislative update, I think you did that?
Covered that, I think.
Okay, new business, review and consideration of future graduation requirements, is that tonight, or not?
I think that Durin would like to present some thoughts for you, yeah. The reason for this, just did by way of introduction, if we want to think about changing, improving, increasing the graduation requirements, we have to think far ahead, so Durin is raising this issue with the board at this point, because if we're talking about graduation requirements four years from now, we've gotta be thinking about, you know, announcing them or making some indication of change, so that the freshmen right now know what they can plan for and what they should expect.
Right.
The issue is larger, can be seen by the board as being larger than Leona Gray, the issue has been raised by, before the State Board of Education, and they are taking up the issue of graduation requirements particularly with regard to math, but also as it affects other, other disciplines or other subjects as well. Now, obviously, we can't afford to wait or, you know, I mean, Durin is presenting, I'm certainly recommending that the board engage in this consideration, and, and consider carefully in way a decision on the matter, so that we can present to the freshman class in the fall what they can expect the graduation requirement will be. Now, you may not be willing to move that fast, I mean, I'm just presenting your political options in terms of your sense of the community and so forth, but that's the reason for bringing it up. and so forth, but that's the reason for bringing it up in terms of planning and in terms of the administration trying to meet your expectations for ...
So before you, going to the details of what, what we're talking about for timeline, you're, you're presenting something tonight to the board, but you're not asking for decision tonight?
I think making a precipitous decision would not be proper. I think you should weigh the, the, the regulation and thought.
Because there is typically a process you go through to allow for feedback. And so if it comes to the board tonight and, you know, people read the minutes and all that, they may have, and I'm sure Durin, you've reached out to the school community some too. So, you know, there should be a process that we allow for transparency, people to come back and give us feedback on that. Mike, you and I are probably the only ones who've been sitting on this board long enough to remember the last time we changed graduation requirements. And we did go through a process that ...
But Durin warned us six months ago this was coming.
Right. She did, she did mention it to us in the past, certainly, but at least once.
Anyway.
As far as details, this is the first, really, so.
Before Durin can present some thoughts.
So at this time, a high school graduate needs twenty-six credits. Among those, there's eight, there's nine point five credits that is just called electives, so that's student's choice. The, my recommendation is that we move from three to four science credits for graduation. Currently, two courses are required, so Introduction to Chemistry and Physics, grade nine, and Biology, grade ten. And I am recommending that we require Earth Science for grade eleven. And I have looked at other schools that do well on the Science State MCEP exams. And I think only one of them, which was Stowe High School, very different population from ours, only required three credits for graduation. Some schools had as many as four and a half or five credits in Science for graduation because it is clear that only through, from, I would say, from the state's point of view and from my analysis of what these other schools are doing, that they have to require a three-year sequence of, of, of science disciplines in order for all of the students to be taught all of the standards that they are going to be assessed on, on the state test, which is also college preparatory coursework. And the fourth credit would be of their choice because we have a number of science electives that are very rich, that, that allow for experiential learning. We also have more chemistry, biology, and soon to be a physics advanced placement that we want students to take advantage of also. But this, what was, which I call the canon of the, of the curriculum that the state is expecting all of our students to have completed by the end of their junior year can only be achieved through this sequenced curriculum. Plus, I, I would like to see, and it's only one semester, you know, so, and it's, at this time, they're structured as a semester-long block course. Now, that's not true of grade seven and eight. We've increased instruction, instructional time by fifty percent because they have a lab period every other day. So that would be even more marvelous to do when, if we can get there in the schedule at some point. And so what I would like to see happen is that even during the course, I, this wouldn't be required, but even in the course within the three years, so that's six semesters, that students would have four of those six semesters with a science in it. So the three required plus an elective. So they'd be really prepared with the college preparatory curriculum and then go on in their twelfth grade to hope, I would like to see half the students do advanced placement. And what Stephen said is absolutely true, that if we were to pass this graduation requirement, it could only begin with the class of 2016, so our incoming ninth graders. And it would not, I'll just reiterate, it would not change the number of credits you need to graduate high school, it'd still be twenty-six, but instead of nine point five credits for electives, it would be eight point five credits for electives. And many of the elective credits our students earn are in English and Science and Social Studies and Math, but we would instead be identifying one of those areas. So I actually don't even see this having an impact on our staffing because it's moving one to another. And that's, is there, are there questions?
So that's all, that's the only change you wanna make in your graduation requirements? Is just adding an additional science? That's it? That seems pretty reasonable.
But this, at this point. Oh, I can ask for more.
No, I mean, like, I was, I was thinking about, like, for math, you know, and for English.
You do math, I'll be ready. If you wanna add that on out, but.
No, 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 no.
I'd be happy to.
Those, those recommendations should certainly come from the administration on what.
Well, I think, you know, I think Durin and I have talked about this a lot and she's worked with the faculty and, and in terms of, I mean, we, this is a, we're on a long-range commitment of project here. We have an instructional leader who's gonna be committed to pull off some major changes and this is one of the key pieces in terms of her work with the faculty in the department, specifically of Science. And certainly the area of Science is one that we have a great need for improved student learning. So I think this does match in terms of your action plan for school improvement and your thoughts about that in the fall. This is, this is responsive to a very, very obvious need, much as the interventions that we've had, the SIMS work in terms of professional development throughout the disciplines on writing and literacy, because writing is also an issue that we seek improvement. So math is not, you know, what do you call it, ignored in this, in this proposal, but it, it is something that, you know, I think at this point administratively, we're not ready to advocate, we don't have it figured out quite. And I do think that I, I, I wanna make sure that we are aware of the State Board of Education's genuine engagement in this issue of, of graduation requirements regarding math. You know, the governor and the commissioner did speak specifically requiring something that in fact in Leland Gray we already have, okay? So it is, you know, it isn't a big stretch to say.
Yes, I mean, I can speak to that, but.
Well, anyway, I, I'm just saying, we, we don't have it. We, we, we're pretty far along the line.
Don't we have, I thought, don't they take Earth Science in ninth grade?
Eight, says on here. I'm just looking at it.
What do they take? They took the science in ninth grade?
Yes, that's the.
It's called Introduction to Chemistry.
Barbara in the study says, oh, this might be the last few years, though.
It may not have been.
I don't think it was from our. I don't think so.
No, no, it, it's relatively new. And also, this year, our science teachers have worked with a consultant, who was affiliated with the Department of Ed, and they have realigned the curriculum, seven through eleven, and maybe probably twelve too, although we don't have that course of the, so I wouldn't say, I don't, I wouldn't say to a whole stuff. So that's, the, of the required courses with, with the assumption of having, we're looking at having two sections of Earth Science offered next year.
For juniors.
For juniors, but it's not required. So we're, we are, in a sense, enrolling them in, but there are some who are opting to do a, a different science instead. So what I, so actual titles of courses have changed. So next year, eighth grade science is not gonna be called Earth Science, it's called something like, I will tell you exactly, I have to look it up. I can just, I mean.
I think it's called Physical World.
There you go. It's in the Program Studies.
It's in, I'm looking at the Program Studies and that's why, it used to be eighth grade was Earth Science.
It's called Physical World, that's right.
The Physical World now. Now they did, in your current Program Studies, you do have Earth Science under eleven, twelve.
So seniors could take Earth Science too?
Yes.
Durin, do you, sorry, do you envision other changes for graduation requirements over the next, not immediate, but like medium or long term?
Foreign language.
So.
And, and perhaps at math, I mean, I wasn't prepared to say yes, let's do math for credits also, I, there's a lot of background work that goes into it, the way, I mean, we were working on the science thing for almost a year, but those are the two that come to mind.
I'm thinking, because of the long gestation, I mean, we're talking four years to start implementing this until it's actually starts bearing fruit, does it make sense to do it incrementally, one at a time, or to group them and do several changes to the requirements and implement them all at once?
I think it's more of a political question than anything else. I, 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 in terms of, I mean, right now, seventy percent of our seventh graders are taking high school credit-bearing foreign language. So, and they will, and all of them are enrolled in eighth, all, all seventy percent of them are enrolled in taking the next level of French or Chinese next year. So they'll have met, if we have a graduation requirement for this current seventh grade class, three, almost three quarters of them will have it done by the time they get to high school. And we're hoping, of course, that they keep going and then start another language. So if we're talking about our current eighth graders having this increased requirement, perhaps we can talk a year from now about our current seventh graders and it really wouldn't be difficult to get the other thirty percent to take foreign language because it's, it's, whereas if you were to look at our senior, like, the percentage of our seniors taking math is maybe twenty-five percent, very, very low, especially since they may have doubled up during, you know, they may have had more than three credits, but not very many, and they might have finished it all by the end of tenth grade. And at this point, I don't see, without increasing the graduation requirement, I don't see that changing, unlike in foreign language where students are naturally attracted to go into that.
It's gonna probably happen anyway, so then the requirement will change along with the need.
So based on that?
Not so much in that.
With, I mean, getting back to combining it rather than incrementally, if you're kind of already there with foreign language or it's not as much of a stretch, what would
It would, it would be more of a stretch for eighth graders right now.
Right.
Because only, what is it, fif, about fifty, forty or fifty percent of them are doing foreign language in middle school. They'll only have finished level one. So, sorry to interrupt. So they're not quite in the same place where the seventh graders are.
Yeah, it just seemed to me that math seemed to be the one that you were kinda, I, I just, I, I love what you're talking about with science. I mean, this is what we've been talking about for, for two years, and science and math, and you're bringing foreign language, which I think is important too. And it just seems like if there was an opportunity to, to go after both of them, if, if we felt we could do it and you guys could do it, it seems like it'd be, it would make sense to look at at least.
Well, we would, the math department and I would have three years to prepare for what that fourth year course would look like. So after Algebra II, and they, actually, three of our staff members are at, visited Harvard Union today, so where I worked before, and they have a four-year math requirement and they have this Algebra for All, like what we're doing. Those students, their pilot group are now doing geometry. Next year, they're all gonna go on to Algebra II, but they are now looking at offering statistics, which they haven't done, I guess, in a long time, because not all of those students who have finished Algebra II are gonna wanna go into pre-calculus or calculus. So, that, but statistics has a lot of other applications, especially in the social sciences.
Yeah.
And so if you wanna do that, we'll be ready in three years. Because we're talking about our incoming ninth grader, so I think we'll be ready for them.
What's really important, you go ahead, Jeff.
Are you gonna be adding more credit requirements or taking them out of the?
Electives. You're gonna take them out of the electives?
Well, if we don't take it out of the electives, then it may have an implication for staffing. With declining enrollment, I don't think there will be much implication for staffing, except that it will be more expensive to maintain the faculty we have with fewer students.
So following up on what Paul said, I think he's absolutely right. This board has, and I don't think there's gonna be anyone on this board who would argue with me, this board has been focused on academics, specifically math and science and literacy, and along with you and certainly with your leadership and Stephen's leadership, taking us down a path. And you've had a, a lot of support, a hundred percent, I would say, support from this board. And I think that's wonderful. But one of the things that I think we need to remember is that as a board, we shouldn't be telling you what we should be doing, is doing what we did last September and putting in writing what our expectations are, what we wanna see for outcomes, and then holding you accountable and you coming to us. So when we say, "We would love to see four and, of, of credits required in math," that's all fine and dandy, but, but what we really should be saying is what we want our kids to know when they leave here, and we should be telling you, "Tell us what will get us there." Now, you're doing that with, with science.
So I, I think that same is true of math, and if we were to have a fourth credit in required in mathematics, we would not have one math teacher unhappy with that. And I think they would very much rise to the task. When you gave me the directive, or I should say, when you directed me to work with the faculty to adopt incentives for this spring's exams, it took off. Today, I made presentations for all the eighth grade science classes and I showed them the raffle tickets and I talked about the party and I talked about the food and, and the spirit points, and they're all like, "We get all this?" And the, and the juniors are going to three different prep sessions during their advisory time with the three high, three high school science teachers. There's after-school opportunities for, in the, basically the three major sciences. And if they go to those, they also get more raffle tickets. There's that, everything I presented to you, there'll be the, I had a student say to me, an eighth grader, "I wanna be the first eighth grader to earn a four, the achievement with distinction on the science exam."
That's cool.
And I followed up with him later, I said, "You're gonna do it, right?" And it also gave me the platform to say to the eighth graders, especially that they've had this double lab period every other day, "You have been taught everything you need to know to do well on this exam." So I would say that the board plays a very powerful role in influencing our teachers because without that, it would have, I think, been harder to, why would this science testing session be different from last year or before that? They actually consulted with our consultants about what is the best environment to test our students in. We did it in Dutton for the last three testing cycles, the kids liked it, but this time we're doing it in a very different environment where there aren't gonna be more than fifteen students in the room with one proctor who they know very well, and the proctor chose which students they wanted to monitor with a balanced group. So they, and they have, you know, that effort rubric every day. So, and that was because of you!
It's showing to everybody how important these tests are and, and that they're a serious thing and you do have the knowledge and be confident that you have the knowledge to do well and set yourself to doing well on the test.
But because we don't require the Earth Science, because our juniors haven't had that, the sequence that is aligned with the state, I can't say to them, "You'll be able to answer every question on the test." Yeah?
One more quick one. Our competing schools, what do they require for credits on Science and Math?
I don't know off the top of my head because what I looked at were high achieving schools in Science and what, what did they require?
Okay, and that was four?
Between three, well, Stowe's exception, it also had three credits. The others had three and a half to five.
Okay, so that might be something that we could focus on as far as a selling point.
Yeah. Cause of, you know, comparison for high achieving schools.
I wholeheartedly support this. I mean, this is raising the bar and it's like long overdue and thank you so much for, 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 for doing this.
Does anybody feel any different?
No.
And I just think of the math, I know I was kinda pushing it, let's, let's do it, but I just, I just like to hear you going from science where you have a plan to go into math and you have a plan, you know what I mean? I mean, might not be right now, but we have a plan when we're working towards it, so I.
Well, the difference is we have a math sequence already. So we do have a plan, we just don't require it. And in Science, we know we need to require it, whereas for achieving in the, on the, on the math exam, you have to have just finished college prep Geometry. And those students who did, most of them passed the exam. If, that, this sort of goes to the conversation Stephen was saying before. We have a non-college prep Geometry exam, as Geometry course, those students don't pass the exam.
Okay.
So that's a discussion we are having. And it's looking at the data that we can, that we understand that. So for all of our college prep students, we have five years of math planned for them, like if they start Algebra in eighth grade, so they get all the way to AP Calculus. What we have for what's been considered non-college prep, it's, it's ended after What we have for what's been considered non-college prep, it's, it's ended after, um, the third year, which is ends in consumer math. And that is a very low-enrolled cour- course, I just want to say. Um, so it would, it would, it would take some planning and through the academic support and, uh, the other work we're doing, especially with aligning with the Common Core standards, I think we can get there. And I didn't plan to propose that we increase the, uh, credits in mathematics to four, but I think it's a great idea. And if whoever you feel you need to talk with or contemplate in your minds, and when we come back together in June, if you would like to direct me. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of ammunition in that.
Yeah, I think that we, yeah, I, I think that that's really the reason for this raising this issue. Okay, I mean, it's a timely time to, to raise it, and you're going to be looking at, you know, in the fall, setting your goals for the next year and so forth, and I, I do, uh, you know, caution us against trying to change everything at once. I think that Doreen has a plan regarding working with the math faculty. I know I've actually been at one such meeting. And the challenge of moving to the Common Core is a significant one, that the science, you know, the science teachers don't have the same, uh, e- expectations. The Common Core in Science is not yet written. I mean, that's really the difference. You know, the, the literacy and the math are, are, are the first. And so the science will come, but, you know, the reason for this emphasis on the graduation requirement of Science, I think, is explained by those different circumstances of what levers we have and what are the obligations that we are working with the staff to fulfill and meet the needs of our students. I, I wouldn't be surprised if after this conversation, uh, you know, Doreen and I don't have another conversation about what can happen mathematically and when that time should come and so forth, but, uh, let's just leave it, uh, the discussion now, and, and unless there are further questions.
And I just want to go back and say once again, I, I just, it's, it's something I feel like I need to caution us. We're not educators, so for us to give you a directive to change the graduation requirements in math because we think our kids need four to graduate would be not necessarily something that would be appropriate for laypeople to do. On the other hand, I think we've told you clearly, we would really like to see, um, an increase in academics and, um, improvement in outcomes. And so if that happens to be what aligns with, if, if increasing your math graduation requirements aligns with that perspective, wonderful. And I, it sounds to me like you're going to get a lot of support.
You'll get a lot of confidence on that one.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, you certainly are getting it on the science.
Yep, definitely.
I don't expect that it can be different.
Yeah, we just have to make sure that we administratively have a, a plan, and we know where we're going with this because, uh, it takes more than just the, uh, you know, requirement or the direction from the board and something happened.
And also.
Really? Well, talk to the governor. He didn't get mad at the change, he said.
We got done right here.
Well, it, it's part of the accountability, so it is, you know.
Let it be done.
That's where we're getting to.
The details are up to them.
Yeah.
We, we do say what we want.
So if the Common Core sta- is just going to be, just right now, doing literacy and math, you're still using the state standards then for all the other disciplines?
That's right. Well, it's the, yeah, the, with the new standard, yeah, the, yep, you're right, the state standards, Vermont standards, your student performance in the other disciplines, yeah. And tho- those are still quite valid, and, you know, no one is thinking they're not good.
Right.
And I think that, you know, I know that some of our members of faculty, and then when I've been to meetings statewide, too, there are people who are pointing out, reminding, you know, go on, oh, administrators like myself, that, look, you know, math and, math and literacy isn't the whole deal. I mean, let's think about the whole child, you know, it's a board, let's make sure we're, we're recognizing that when you change the graduation requirements, there are certain trade-offs, you know, that are going to happen.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it isn't without.
So far, we leave it to the.
It's not like, uh, you know, it's not like a win-win situation. I mean, there, there, you know, there's some things, some unintended consequences that have to be considered and, and certainly weighed, so I don't want to caution the enthusiasm here at all. I just want to make sure that we're proceeding deliberately and, and in a way that it's, it's going to be, uh, actually productive, you know.
You are taking off an elective away and, and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And keep in mind, in terms of your administrative leadership resources, I mean, Doreen has worked in forty-eight hours a day already, but I'm just saying that it's not, you know, you, you can only focus, just like the president can only focus on a couple of things at once, you know, and, and, you know, we, that's in response to your question about why not change all the graduation requirements, you know, you know, loan. Well, that may be advisable, depending on the circumstances of, of the school, of the school community. And, and it takes a lot of energy to get this kind of stuff, a lot of precision to get this kind of stuff done.
But it is important that a board is connected and focused, and we are, I think, and I think that's wonderful. And I just want to say thank you to Doreen, and you too, Stephen, for your support of the initiatives. And, um, this is a whole new conversation we're having, and I love it myself. I hope the rest of you do the same way, it sounds like you do also. Thank you, Doreen.
You're welcome.
Okay, was there anything else?
All I know is I'm looking at the data right now of our seniors, uh, currently, and they are in nine different math courses. And it shouldn't, there shouldn't be more than two.
Yeah, it's one of the issues of our choice in a small school.
Yeah, there is.
Where five of them are taking Algebra.
Regular Algebra?
Yes.
Only five of your seniors?
Taking it as seniors.
As seniors.
That means they're a little behind.
So they haven't taken geometry?
That means they're three years behind in math. They don't, and they don't catch up. I mean, I mean, it may be if they'll go to college and they'll take Algebra again.
How did that happen?
The other end is the AP. Okay, I just, in interest of the time, let's not get into the.
I'm sorry. But so there's lots of justification for this.
Yep.
All right, closed off the steps.
We know how you love it.
Thanks for watching.
Okay, so if, if there's nothing else on this piece, which is review the consideration for gra- changing graduation requirements, we'll move on? I think Doreen has a good direction. You too, Stephen?
Yeah, we'll, uh.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look forward to, you know, presenting an action item at the next agenda. Right?
Yes, sounds great. Does that work for everyone?
We won't forget that it's coming up.
Just yank it out. That top piece there, that one. Yeah. So we're on bills and pay orders. You can rip it. Here's some, everybody rips. Okay, so bills and pay orders. We have warrant sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, and sixty-six, totaling four hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred nineteen thousand eighty-two cents, and payroll of four twenty, and a payroll of five oh four, uh, totaling two hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents. Total warrants and payrolls are seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents. So these have been reviewed by at least two board members. Is there questions, comments, articles?
Almost up.
Everybody's, okay, no comments, no questions? Okay, we need a motion?
Move to approve the bills and pay orders.
Second? Second. Okay, how do you second it? All right, so if there's no changes, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any extensions? Okay, we should pass this, thank you. Oh, I would have handed it to you. Okay, consent agenda. Everybody's okay with the consent agenda? By general consensus, we've approved the consent agenda. Okay, let me just pull it out. That's the minutes. Uh, we do have an executive session. We've lost our administration, but we have an executive session for personnel, and if they're not here, we should just run. So we need to go to an executive session, but while we're waiting for them to come back, um, next meeting is June twelfth, seven P M. There's a reg committee meeting, I think I mentioned earlier, did I tell you it was June sixth, it says seven. They're, um, they're all, the reg committee meetings are always right here in this room if anybody wants to come. And, um, Wyndham Central Board meeting, that's our annual meeting, May twenty-third at Dover, and our summer retreat, retreat, the date is set, the time is set, the place is not, nor is the agenda, but we're.
What was the date again, August?
It's August twenty-second, and it's at five P M. It'll be at probably, last year was at Cooper Hill Inn in Dover, that was a wonderful facility.
That was climbing up, too.
Yeah. So, you know, we'll, we'll see where we go. It's usually about twenty to twenty-five dollars a head.
Is that really affordable?
That's a full meal. It was last year. Um, they gave you receipts so you could come and submit it for your book to your board. I didn't submit mine, but, you know, you can. Some boards did, some boards didn't. But you should, if, if the money is the issue, definitely go. Don't let the money stop you and submit it, and, you know, we have professional development money for school board members. So, um, it's a really good one. I think the, the thing that we're leaning on for, um, agenda is the strategic plan. We're doing the Wyndham Central strategic plan, and that was Stephen's recommendation our last Wyndham Central meeting, so I think that's where we'll go. Okay, so we have an executive session. We've killed a little time while you're gone.
Did we skip over Journey East on purpose?
Uh, we, I'm sorry, before you got here, Doreen, during adjustments to the agenda, asked to move it to the June meeting because they just got back.
I, I talked about the show under my, you know, report, but, uh, we, we, Tom Hunter intends to present and, with Doreen, but it just got back, they're going to put it off till next one.
Okay. Need a motion to go into executive session?
Move to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter?
Thank you. Sir, second?
Second.
Seconds all over quick, Mike, second. Okay.
Good night.
Good night, Doreen.
Thank you.